Chairs around.
Chair.
You can sit wherever. We need the open spots. Uh, I got first red lines always here.
Don't sit down. Don't we usually stand up and pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do technically approve the agenda, right?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I will second.
All three of you vote?
Said that I.
A and I.
Aye.
And raise our proposed tax hearing for FY twenty-six budget. Here we all let you kind of state some numbers.
Okay.
And then we'll kind of open it up.
I know you've all received your mailing. Um, I'll just want to explain a little bit because it can be confusing. With the county, we're always currently working in three different value years. So what you're paying taxes on currently to our treasurer is the twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three valuations. And then what we're looking at right now currently is our twenty twenty-four valuations, which we're proposing for the fiscal year twenty-six budget. And I know the assessor is also mailing out a mailing. He's already working on the twenty twenty-five assessments. So this can be confusing because you're getting the mailing from us for our maximum levy and then you're going to get the assessment notice. And that is the assessed value, not the taxable value. Um, I want to explain the rollbacks. You know, the state gives us a rollback that we apply to the assessed value, then it becomes taxable dollars. And every year we prepare a taxable valuation report that goes out to all the entities, schools, cities, townships, our E nine one one, EMA, um, benefited fires. All those have their separate values that they're allowed to use for their taxable dollars. So what the board's job is to do their budget is they look at that valuation, the dollars, and what we can generate from the property tax revenue. We were forced to reduce after twenty twenty-three, the legislation, you know, they're trying to force those counties. I think this is where it originally started. There was thirty-some counties that were over their maximum levy rate. The general fund can only levy three point five oh. So then they started, the legislators started making some changes. In our valuations, we also have to show the growth in the county, just like new structures, new growth. Not just your assessment changing, but this is actually new growth, new developments, that kind of stuff coming into the county. So with us being over our two percent growth, we were forced to reduce both our general basic levies and our general supplemental. So I know these statements can be confusing because the assessed dollar, the valuation itself grew in the county, so it's showing an increase. But if you look at the overall levy rates, we did reduce both of those. So if you guys have any questions or open it up for comments.
I've got a question. Well, since everything went down in the rollback and they raised my assessment, I think two years in a row, maybe three. Two and one saying the same, I think.
Depends on also, and that would be questions for the assessor, we maybe should have had him be here. The assessment, I know every so many years we do an equalization order. So the state looks at all the counties and the growths and they try to like equalize it across. And so every county will get an equalization notice. For example, we might have had to increase our egg value. And then the next year it might be one of a while. Then one year it could be residential.
But it's still with all the rollbacks and all that, my, it, it, it went up every, I think I've ended up being like four hundred bucks in the last couple of years.
Yes, and the state has.
Somebody's getting that money. Is that money going to the county or is the state getting it?
Because the state is forcing us their, the rollbacks. And if you look at that Senate file, their goal is to do away with rollbacks totally. But then they'll keep forcing us to lower the levies. But they're also planning to increase your exemptions, like for homestead, the sixty-five and older, the military exemptions, all that that increases. That's dollars the county does not get back from the state. I also handed out a piece, um, our auditor's affiliate put together. We went to the state Capitol when the legislation was there meeting to voice our concerns. Um, we looked at all the unfunded mandates that are passed down to the counties. We look at it as a piece of the puzzle, like we're trying to put all these pieces together and make it work within the dollars that we can levy for. So for example, medical examiners, um, that's just a required thing that we have to pay. Anybody that passes away unattended in the county, whether it's our resident or not, we're forced to pay that. Um, another example is a juvenile. We've had one particular juvenile in the system and it's cost us tremendous amounts in the last couple of years. And then libraries, we're forced to give out libraries some money, just different things by the legislation that's passed on to the counties that we're forced, you know, to provide those services to residents, whether we have the funding or not. So we're trying to be very stringent as well, but you look at all the increased costs to our jail, like the food, the vehicles, our insurance premiums, all that stuff has increased in the county as well.
So that money that I put in there, that, that's all these increases the last several years, the county got to keep that money?
The, if it's.
Or they all, it all went to the state? You didn't get any?
No, no, no. That's, what you pay in the county stays in Benton County's funds.
Because I just paid them here yesterday.
Yep. Yep. No, that's, that goes into the county's.
Okay, alright.
But I'll let the board.
But it gets split up.
Yeah, it gets allocated out.
It ain't like our supervisors get to deliver it out. Your school's going to get it, your fire department's going to get it. You know what I mean?
Our new EMS packs is going to get a portion.
Yep, cities.
Something that's, and Haley's talked about it, something that's real that we're dealing with, uh, is these unfunded mandates. The state will say, well, we're gonna, we're gonna cut our budget here. Well, what they do is, is yes, they cut the state budget, they pass the expense of that on to the county. Like that mailer that everybody got, that's not cheap. But Haley has to send them out. Auditor's office takes care of that. What, twelve thousand?
And that's what's frustrating. We wanted to like, we know the assessor's doing one this, so soon after ours, why couldn't we try to combine them into a one mailing? And make it more explainable. But that's our goal.
Yeah, you said the assessment went up over two percent. That's the reason the tax rate is lower. So is your budget three percent what they require? That's what your budgets went up is three percent?
No, we could only increase two percent. Last year it was a three percent max.
So what, what's it going up this year?
We, we were forced, it was, our growth was two point eleven, I think it come out to be, so we were forced to reduce down to the two. And I think they're going to gradually hold us to that two percent growth. Other than next year, I think we can add the, the new value, which would be all like, you know, not the current value, but it would be like those new structures put up, that kind of stuff. So you know, you know, like the, the ratio, a lot of people's buildings were down and then they put up new and improved. I mean, some of that, all those different ratios affects our valuations.
So you're saying our taxes are only going up two percent?
The assessed value, the valuations itself went up two percent.
Because in here it looks like they're going up eleven percent.
Right, because that's based on the assessed value. But if you look at our levy rates, it's reduced.
Okay. And the question is, where does this money go? You know, there's enough new building in this county that should more than make up for what's needed in tax increases. You know, and there, there's so much, like yesterday's meeting, I was watching, they talked about, I think, twelve county vehicles that they was paying insurance on that didn't exist, you know? I, and then, you know, other things that I think is wasted money that needs to be looked at. This new vehicle, three hundred and fifty thousand dollar vehicle for the sheriff's office, that's wasted money as far as I'm concerned. We don't need an assault vehicle in Benton County, as far as I'm concerned. You know, the security here, here and at the courthouse, that's a quarter of a million dollars a year for that. As far as I'm concerned, that's wasted money. There's only three courthouses in the state of Iowa where you're required to go through security to get your driver's license and pay your taxes. I don't know why we need to be with. I, I, and how many, how many people come in at their budget, did you ask where they was cutting budget?
We've gone through each budget line by line. Uh, we have cut from some of the budgets.
Do you have a total number that you've cut out of that budget?
I do not. Uh, but we haven't certified the budget yet either.
No.
What you see printed in the paper, uh, which it's all, what do you want to call them? Deadlines by the state, Haley, that it has to be published by. So what you see published is basically what gets turned in. That absolute worst case scenario is what you see published. And then we go and try to get it down from there to a workable number.
Now, the other thing I want to comment on is, I think just about everybody that come in and asked for a wage increase got it. I think everybody in here is asking for a tax decrease. Are we going to get that?
Pardon you?
You know, because I got a feeling quite a few of these people in here are the same boat, I, they're on a fixed income. Our social security didn't go up as much as our taxes. We're going negative every year. Our buying power keeps going down and down and down. When's it going to stop?
That's a good question.
Yeah, I'm on a fixed income too, you know, I have my disability and I only get a seven amount each month. And if we keep taxing like we're doing, I won't be able to have my home. I'll be homeless. You know, that's pretty, pretty important to me.
That stems back from the state when we got to do the, uh, equalization on your assessed value. The state mandates, we have to do that. For instance, if you bought your house in the seventies, it was worth sixty thousand dollars. Okay? Now, in two thousand twenty-five, would you sell your house for sixty thousand? No, it's worth two hundred and some thousand dollars now. So that's where the state comes in and mandates, we have to raise your assessed value. We have no control over that.
Okay, who sets the tax rate though?
We set the tax rate.
Okay.
What the state mandates us. We were last year three, two years ago, three and a half percent. Last year was three percent. This year is two percent.
Well, not levied, yeah.
So it, so our taxes should go down, but they're not going because assessed value.
Your assessed value went up.
Right.
So wouldn't that be a wash?
No, it's not a wash because it's going to cost you more no matter what.
If, if you're talking assessed value, how do they know the property value of each home went up?
Because the businesses or not so much businesses, the houses in your area were sold. That's where they come up with that figure.
It's all on market value.
Yes.
Not on actual value then. Because some of these homes are not going up every year.
I'm not going to disagree with you. You know, sooner or later, the, the market is going to crash, you know? Few years ago, farm ground was eighteen, nineteen thousand dollars an acre. Now, that has come down somewhat.
Now, how much more revenue is coming in because of new building each year in this county?
Ooh, I can't tell you.
Yeah, this is, this is the first year that they're going to start making a show that new value, the separation.
In reality, you're getting more money into the county. It, it should be going, our taxes should be going down. Simple math. If your budget's a hundred million dollars and you keep bringing in more money in taxes every year for new buildings, we should be going down, extremely going down.
But the biggest tax that you would get is would be off of like a house.
Right.
Farmage, uh, machine check, you know, that, go get taxed the same rate, right?
Correct. Well, there are different classifications and different rollback supply.
Is that just if they're egg used?
But, but there is a lot of new houses going up.
Yes, there is. Now, a lot of these in town here, I won't mention any of the name of the towns, but they'll go to the TIF to put the street, the water, the sewer in, okay? That tax dollars for whatever, how long they put that TIF, ten or fifteen years, all that tax money that's on their new houses, goes back to the city to help pay for the streets, the curb and gutter, the sidewalks, the sewer, the water, for them houses. We don't get to touch that at all until they're paid back.
And what's the duration of that?
Whatever they sign that TIF up for, ten, fifteen, twenty years.
Most of them are ten. They have to usually get approval from the government bodies if they increase it longer.
Okay. Because that brings up another thing is the school bond issue. I heard this last year and I heard the other night at the school board meeting, that the school, the new schools paid off, but we're still being taxed for that.
That I do not know.
That bond issue was supposedly retired.
That I do not know.
Well, somebody needs to look into this. If this is happening, if this waste is going on, somebody needs to be accountable for it.
I know there's proposals for a future year. Currently, the schools and cities aren't forced to reduce like the counties are, but I think that's in their future.
Understand, but if, if that bond issue was paid off, then our, that should drop off of our taxes.
Well, if they have a bond, like just like our county debt service, you can't levy for debt service if there's no payment. So I don't, I can't speak on behalf of schools or cities, but normally there's statutes that allow them to levy. So I would assume if it was a bond, you can't levy for it if they're done paying it.
Okay.
That's the other problem with the TIFs is the schools get no money out of TIFs either.
Correct.
Correct.
It isn't just the county, because they did that in Tamek County, they tipped it and put it in the road use fund and they're still paying that off. In general, if it's a TIF, it's a bad idea for most taxpayers except maybe you're, if you're in the TIF, it's the only place it, it ever wins for anybody. And I'm not even sure of that. And you ask how long they go, they may be set at ten years, but they'll renew them and they'll renew them. They're practically never ending. So we need to talk to the people about this to get this stopped. TIFs are a bad idea, period, in my estimation.
Well, and people don't understand when they're in a taxing district that is a TIF, your, your overall tax levy is the same as if you weren't in a TIF. It's just where that money is allocated out.
Well, when the city is acting as an investor, I mean, a lot of investors will do the development and they will cover the cost of the streets and the sewers and stuff like that because they're the investor. They're the ones making the money. The cities will get the taxes. So why does even the city want to be an investor if they're not going to get the tax money? I don't quite really understand how you cannot be making money.
They'll have a development agreement with those contractors, between the city and the contractors. Once the county allocates that money to the city, then it's theirs to pay, make those payments and such.
Another question I got, do you know how much comes in from local option sales tax and where does that money go?
Yes, we usually get, I'll give you a rough estimate here. It's just under two million usually, or, I mean, it varied, like with COVID, obviously that affected it. But that money has specific uses as well that we can use it for. So much of it, we do a lot to transfer to the secondary roads, um, rural basic, um, sometimes conservation gets to use some of it. We allocate to libraries a portion of that, um, and then twenty-five percent of it we use for tax reduction, which we do focus on that. I pay a lot of our courthouse software out of local option sales tax money, um, just different things like that.
Buyer trucks?
Yes, the county does gift out ten percent, yeah. Good point.
Because I noticed in Lynn County, they have signs up along the roads where the roads were done with local option sales tax. And, you know, here our roads, we did get some improvements last year. Finally got the Shelsberg bypass done, which was scheduled thirty years ago, you know, so.
Yep, a portion of that we do transfer into that fund. And once it's in that secondary roads fund, it gets to stay in that fund.
It's, and I'll bring this up again, this unfunded mandates. It's not a bad idea to keep in contact with our auditor's office, uh, because their, their association puts things out about these unfunded mandates. Comes from the state and they cap the budget here and then they say, and by the way, now you gotta pay for this.
We pay the bills for it, yeah. So, and a lot of times elections too, people don't realize how much an election costs. You know, I always have to have money in there. What if a city or a school wants to do a bond? I have to be prepared and have that spending authority. Doesn't mean I'll use it if we don't need to, but I have to provide that spending authority.
This expensive mailer that went out, that could have been more clear, I guess, um, can you guys please help explain? If the property tax on a residential property value increased by ten percent and you're decreasing your rate, how come the percent changes more than ten percent?
Because they're basing that on a hundred thousand dollars last year and then they put it as a, versus a hundred and ten thousand dollar assessment.
To the ten percent increase, right?
Yeah, and we did not make up that language. That's our legislation that did that. But I do have a handout too.
I've, I've looked at the website because it had a link and it does, it does not clear it up. So if the valuation went up ten percent and you're decreasing the levy rate, how come it's showing a twelve, eleven, thirteen percent increase?
Because that's the dollar wise we're bringing in versus that, the growth in the valuations times the levy rate. It's predicting that much growth in tax dollars, even though we're reducing our levy.
It's confusing.
It is.
That's not good math.
It's not, and we all talked about that. Last year it was even worse, and so they thought they improved this and it's still not. We went and spoke.
What was the average increase in property value in the county?
Um, I couldn't tell you that offhand. That would be more of a assessor, like Larry Assessor.
Because they use ten percent as the example and.
Right, and then the rollback factor, because the rollback's changed.
So is that, is that accounted for in here or is this a hundred thousand of taxable?
That's just the hundred percent, hundred percent taxable. Yeah, no rollbacks configured in that.
Yeah.
I know.
So let's save our money and take it off of property taxes and not do a stupid mailing next year.
I agree, but you know, that's, again, that's forced upon us to do this from our legislation.
That's what she was talking about. That was another mandate we had to do. That was twelve thousand bucks to get a letter that made you upset. I got them too, you know, it was stupid. But it's mandated from down in Des Moines. We have no choice in this.
I think let, next year, there, we talked about them as our auditor affiliate too, we sat down with them.
For the people making those assumptions.
They might try to make it more personalized to your individual taxes. But that's going to be a nightmare for us because we're not even running.
I don't need it personalized. I need it logical. This, this does not make any sense.
We need to know how much our taxes are going to go up, what percentage.
If property values go up ten percent and you're decreasing the levy, they should by definition be lower than ten percent. And this shows higher than ten percent. So it's, it's not good math. So.
Nope. It's a mathematical nightmare, trust me, we know.
Who makes up the letter?
The state, legislation.
The state makes up the letter.
Legislation does that and then our Department of Management puts it together. And once like all the schools and cities had their levies out there, then I had to pull that information into my software to generate this mailing specific to your household, like what taxing district you were. Townships obviously was left blank, but it starts with the school, county, and then the city.
The other, the other point that I really wanted to bring up is that this is showing a higher increase for commercial property. And I don't have any commercial property, but I think that is completely unjust. Businesses don't vote, businesses don't send kids to school, they don't use resources. So why in the world would we have that in our state or in our county? Where we would unjustly tax corporations, commercial property at a higher rate? They're just going to pass that on to the consumer and either increase services or goods. So really, we're being double taxed as citizens because of that. So really, you're hiding the numbers and saying, oh, your property taxes are only going to go up this much. But really, all of our other expenses are going to go up more if we're charging commercial property higher rates. So that's, that's terrible.
And again, that's out of market control and that commercial has a different rollback rate too.
I have commercial property in town, that's why I'm here. My taxes went from twelve thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars in twenty twenty-three to twenty-one thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars on my property taxes on my business on West D Street.
That's crap.
It's seventy-seven point five percent increase on my property taxes on my business. It is unbelievable. I'm in here trying to be civil, trying to be civil. But a seventy-eight percent increase on my property value, it doesn't equate to any of my business. I mean, the ratio tore through here, a tornado tore through, tore through, tore through here. Tore the bat, one of my cold storage buildings up. I don't use that for anything. It don't make me get a lot of money. It just sits there. Tore the rafters off it, totaled the building. I took the money that I got, fixed my building and built another one because I needed a little bit more cold storage for my business. And the thank you I got from the city was the seventy-eight percent increase in my property value. A twenty-two thousand dollars is a lot of money. You know how hard it is to make twenty-two thousand dollars in business? I can't mandate that everybody pays me a fee across this county and just collect it. I have to go out and figure out how I'm going to actually make that. Granted, I improved my property and I'm kicking myself in the head. Unfortunately, as a Benton taxpayer, I've lived here my whole life. Have a business in town that employs people. Think I'm paying my fair share. Think I'm a good citizen. I think I keep my property looking good, but I'm getting kicked in the nuts doing it. And it, and it does not make sense. What stuff like this does to me as a commercial business owner and as a person who owns a business in the city of Benton, in the county of Benton, and in the state of Iowa potentially even at times, is it encourages me to leave. I have, I have eleven employees. I, I have five of them now. It used to be all of us lived in town. I have five of them now that live out of state. When I ask people if they want to work for me, the first thing they ask me is if they have to relocate because they don't want to live here. They say that to me. I mean, I'm not making this up. Again, I live in this community, so I'm not trying to crap on it. But you, you have to look at the amenities of which this community is providing its citizens. You have to look at, at what we have available to us and what we're getting for the amount of money that we're paying in our taxes. And I don't think that one could equate that that is necessarily fair at this point in time, or at least justified to me. I own a home in town. It went up almost $2,000 in property taxes, 1,600 and some change. So I pay just, just south of $30,000 a year in property taxes in this county between my business and my one home. I also have, I also have property over in another county in Boone. And I watched the video yesterday. I would have came yesterday and sat in here and listened to it in person. Again, I, I know all the, I know a lot of the people that spoke yesterday. I've lived here my whole life. There, some of them are friends of mine. I'm not trying to crap on employees or people asking for raises. But what's the justification for all of this at times? The money has to come from somewhere. And me as a business owner, I can't just hand out raises like candy to my employees and just say, oh, it's just the way it is. It, there has to be some justification. We as taxpayers are the people that are paying all this stuff. So there should be some accountability or at least some explanation to us that we can understand. I'm glad I'm not the only person in the room that doesn't understand the math associated with this thing that's sent to me. Because it doesn't, it confuses me. But I, I have one from another county and I heard it yesterday. Many employees, I've heard it before by other employees, how they are constantly comparing their salaries to other counties. Well, let's compare our taxes to other counties. Why, why in, in the county of Boone where I own property is my tax rate there as, as a, for the county of Boone, 3.3%, 3.36%? In Benton County it's 6.84%. For an urban resident, for a rural resident, it's 5.65 in Boone County. In Benton County it's 6, it's 10.67. It's double. The county tax rate is double. So my question is, why is it double? We can talk population all you want, but Boone has, Boone has a 26,000 person population and, and Benton has 25,000. So why, why in the world is our tax rates double for an extra thousand people? Some of this stuff to me is just incredibly confusing. And again, I don't want to be confrontational. I just kind of like, I don't understand this stuff, but, but, but it directly impacts my business and my livelihood. And so I think that I can, everybody else who probably feels very similar. It, it just sometimes what's going on and what we're seeing and what we're having, actually having to, to realize as, as taxpayers isn't, isn't aligned. So I'm, that's why I'm here. I don't, I don't know why. Why is the tax rate here twice as much as it is in Boone County?
Without looking at theirs, I can't answer that. Again, I don't know if they have a debt service like we do. We're paying off our radio towers. So there's different factors that add into those levies.
Yep.
Or EMS, I don't know if they have EMS.
Right.
I don't know what their tax base is for their valuations. Maybe they have a huge tax base so they can reduce that levy because there's more value in that county. I don't know all those different factors. But again, this is the assessed value we're talking about. That is not always on the county's control. Commercial property, I know the state did away with the business property tax credit. You had that a few years ago on the taxes. Now they call it a tiered assessment. There's just so many different factors with every year. So I can't answer the questions as far as how the assessor comes up with the values. And again, I want to reiterate, it's not just the county's dollars. When you're paying your taxes, you're paying the schools, the cities, you know, some of them. And their, their levies are sometimes higher than what the county's asking for. But again, that's the consolidated rate is what you're paying on.
Everybody seems to point to everybody else. When I ask the city what's going on, they point to the county. When I ask the county what's going on, they point to the city. You know, and I, I get it. And again, I don't have any problem paying school taxes and I got kids in school. I've raised my kids here, so that stuff to me is common sense. But some of this stuff to me is just, it just doesn't make sense. And it, and, and again, 77 and a half percent increase in my property taxes in one year. I'll take his $400 increase he just talked about over there any day of the week. But mine are worth $9,000.
Is that your assessment or actual tax dollars?
That's what I'm paying in taxes. I mean, and we always get into this assessed versus tax stuff and it gets confusing. Because if I ask Larry, he says, well, it's assessed value. Well, then here comes the tax bill a year later. So it's like we're, we're kicking this subject down the road and not having to publicly, publicly answer people that are ending up having to pay the taxes. It's like, they come in, they assess our property, say, hey, it's just your assessment, it's not your tax value. And then a year later you get the tax value and it's what it's assessed at and everything goes up and then everybody hides. Why can't we just have this accountability? I mean, and I don't mean that bad, maybe.
The supervisor's office-
It just doesn't. I don't know.
There must be watching.
The YouTube is on.
Hello? Hello?
Phone in.
They'll have to phone back, yeah.
Well, I, I, I understand your frustration as well. I mean, it's, it's hard as-
What sets, what sets, what sets the tax rate? What sets that?
The board supervisors.
Because, because you, again, and I assume that the current property tax is the value that's being generated. I mean, these are millions of dollars. You've got 15 million in Boone, 28 million in Benton County. Where's the 3?
Hi, I just have some public comments for the meeting that's going on.
Okay, um, you need to turn your volume way down because we can hear the man in the room talking, but we can't hear you. So, but we need to let him finish first.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's a $13 million difference just between the two counties. And again, we're talking about a thousand person population difference. So do a thousand extra people demand 13 more million dollars in this, in Benton County than it does in Boone County? And again, you get into Blackhawk versus Buchanan and some of these other comparisons and I get all that. Population, we're, we're, we're screwed here if our population is not going up. Because everybody here wants to compare the wages that everybody's making, whether it be the sheriff or whoever, to other counties. But there ain't enough residents here to pay the funding for that. So if, if, what I tell people, and again, what, what makes sense to me is if, if you don't like what you get paid at the county, move! Don't force us within the county to pay property taxes as if we're living in a higher populated county where they have more money accessible or where everybody's paying more. To me, it's just numbers. It seems like some of this stuff just doesn't jive. But why isn't anybody just telling people, hey, you know, it's not in the budget to give raises all the time? It's just not. It's not in the budget. We, has anybody looked at some of the money that people are making publicly in this county? Does anybody know what the average income is salary wise in the county or even in the United States? It, we've got some people that make a lot of money in this county, a lot of money. And we're supposed to live in a county that generally speaking is, has a lower cost of living. That's why a lot of us live here. It's because we have a lower cost of living. If I want a higher cost of living, I'll move to Iowa City. I'll move to Cedar Rapids. I'll move to a different place where the cost of living is a little higher, but I know that going in. But to push some of that back on us and push taxes back on us, you're going to hurt the community more than help it. I don't have a solution, but I think you're going to hurt it more than help it because you're going to chase people like me out.
People will have to sell their homes and go somewhere else. I know I'll have to. That's all I had.
Hello?
Hello, um, I just, I have a couple of my office passengers who agree with me.
Uh, first, what, what's your name, please?
Whitney Naufish.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, um, what, as a county, what has been done to, I guess, evaluate what expenses we have? I look at, just looking at it from an overall perspective. I know there's been several meetings about like the export rates, their contracts. You know, we're paying them time and a half instead of doing comp time, which is a huge savings. Has anybody looked at that? Has anybody looked at like the job reviews of all of the clerical jobs? You know, I work for a really large company and I can tell you that clerical or entry level jobs do not have the same salary that the county is paying. I'm not saying anybody isn't worth their salary, but like, has there actually been a review of some of these expenses? We have two deputies sitting on full time wages and benefits at the courthouse every single day. All they're doing is putting stuff through a metal detector. Do we need to do that or can we save some money by contracting that out to a lower paid job maybe or someone that doesn't need benefits? You know, this, we talk about software costs. We talk about all of these things. Like what have the supervisors done to evaluate those costs and figure out where we can cut some expenses?
I guess it's the habit. That's right.
All right, um, do, do you still have your other device or whatever turned up? So you can hear me?
Is it hung up?
Hello?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna try to leave it like this. We do wage comparisons. We, we are very much aware that we have to. Now, we're, we're, we're aware that we can't pay what Blackhawk, when in Johnson paid. We know we can't keep up with their pay scales. Okay, but we also know that we have to be competitive. We've got, we gotta be in the market or we don't get, we don't get applications for job openings. We have to, we have to be, what do you want to say? We have to be relevant or employer in the job market. And unfortunately, or fortunately, whichever way you want to look at it, because of our geographic location, you know, we're between Waterloo, Cedar Rapids and then just down the road. You know, our southeast corner actually border touches with Johnson County. We compete with them in our job market. We know we can't, we can't beat them. Few years ago, we did a hiring bonus for hiring on a $5,000. And then one of the bigger counties, within days, theirs was $10,000. We can't compete with that. But we've got to be in the market somehow.
Okay, well, a $5,000 sign on bonus is different than a 10% increase in pay across the board. And when I look at, again, just comparing, and this is, I'm not saying nobody is worth their salary because I do believe people are worth their salary and they're worth what they bring to the table. But I'm telling you a 10% increase in someone's pay is unheard of in any other job field. In addition to that, there are several county hourly employees who are out busting their ass every day and doing things, working overtime. And they're not allowed to use that for comp time. That is a saving for the county that should be looked at. Because comp time is cheaper than paying time and a half. Those are the types of things that I feel like could be saving some money that probably need a harder look than just saying we're going to slap this tax increase on everybody. There are places where there could be budget cuts done at the county level and you guys are the elected people that should be doing it and taking a solid, hard look at it.
Okay, your message, I'm not disagreeing with the thing that anybody in the room said. I can't disagree with it. We are looking at budget cuts. You know, it's not simple.
But the question was asked where, and do you have proof of it?
Before something is proposed to everybody, I think that the review and the ideas and what the plan is should be communicated before something is just slapped on the taxpayers. So my suggestion would be to go to the drawing board and figure out where, where there's going to be some concessions and be able to come and explain all of this stuff very clearly. Not with some standardized mailing that costs the county $12,000 to send out. I know that wasn't you guys, but if you're sending a mailing out, at least send something with it that explains what the county is doing to counteract some of this stuff. Right now, there is no explanation for that. And as a taxpayer, it's not fair. Again, we elected you guys to do these jobs. We need you to do them and be able to communicate them and come back with some valid plans for how you're combating this stuff. There has been nothing communicated today or previously to my knowledge as to where you are actually making some cuts and what your go forward plan is to save some money. We are a small county. I heard somebody comparing it to Boone. It's, it's absolutely ridiculous. They're in both proximity to Des Moines and Ames. And you're, we're paying more here. I know we're between Blackhawk and Lynn, but it's not an apples to apples comparison across the board anyway. Somebody needs to be accountable and somebody needs to do this work.
No, and, and that, that won't ever be an apples to apples comparison. We tried a lot-
It won't, so, so throwing in that we need to be offering extra money to people to be competitive?
We tried, we tried-
It's kind of a, it's kind of an analogy, right?
Yeah, and we tried and it didn't work.
Can you tell us what the amount of pay increase was for county employees?
Ma'am, do you want to stay on the line or do you want to listen from where you're at?
I'll listen, I'll listen from where I'm at, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, it, it varied greatly. We have two unions in the county. Secondary roads discovered by a union and the sheriff's office discovered by a union. Those were all settled at 4%. This sheriff's office has a year left on theirs.
I believe so.
And the secondary roads has two years. The biggest bulk of the county employees came in 3%. And then there are some that are more. I don't believe anybody is less.
How much more?
You want to talk?
What's the highest?
Percentage or dollars?
Dollars, percentage, whatever you want to.
Well, 12.
12%.
Except I think that 12% equated to like $2,900. It's not a big amount. I don't have that much.
I think I know who you're talking about. That was a consolidation. Two departments into one. So the department that was paying before is no longer paying for that. So this, this department took on more responsibility and a whole new department. So that was the driving force towards the increase. Had a year, but we cut a bunch from over there.
We don't see that. Food permits the amount.
We're still working on it, that's the-
That would be something that would be beneficial to see. We just saved X dollars by giving this person an increase in 12%, but they're doing two department jobs. Like, that would be something that would be beneficial for us. As we're looking at government efficiency and cutting and how we can be more caring and competent. And, and I'm seeing with this, this is incompetent. And what I'm hearing is, do we actually care? If, if we say we're just cutting, but we don't have numbers to show or specifics, then I'm seeing that we don't care. And if we're not competent and we don't care, then we need new people. So let's, let's see the competence and the caring demonstrated.
So I got one point. Compare union to non-union workers. Courthouse is non-union workers. Are they going to get 3% raise every year? Because I know how unions negotiate. They're going to come in, you know, do the job for their workers. But salary employees, are they going to get 3% every year?
Yeah, it's up to the comp board that made a recommendation to us.
So then you guys decide if we're going to give 3% every year.
Correct.
That one you said that got 4%, is that 4% every year?
The unions.
The union is going to come in and negotiate-
Every year.
Within that three year contract. It depends on what they negotiate.
Then they can negotiate it up from there.
That's unheard of.
No, it's a good thing.
4% every year?
Uh, it's about market right now. But well, two years ago, when it was done.
Privately owned businesses, I had a very large company myself and we didn't get paid raises for three years in a row. So it's all how you look at it, I guess, and who's responsible for taking the lead and getting things done that need to get done. And quite frankly, I'm not very happy right now. I'm trying to stay calm, but I'm not really- I'm trying to stay calm, but I'm not really happy with the jobs that all we've been doing.
You said that part of this phrase is for budget amendment needs. Have you approved a budget amendment yet?
No, we haven't.
Okay.
This, what we're talking about is fiscal year '26, but we have a budget amendment next week for fis-, for fiscal year '25.
Okay.
But what I, when we put out that explanation, the spending authority needs to be there for emergencies and that kinda thing. So, you know, in years past, we've had the flooding or something, something come up and we had to, you know, put all the barricades and the extra expenses. So our point being would be like, some of that you have to have a cushion in there for those added expenses that you don't normally do on your day-to-day operation.
Okay, so do you have like a fund that that goes into the-
We commit funds for that.
Okay.
You know, like every year, we put a certain portion in there. That way, we can add that spending authority.
Did we save, um, like lots of money this year in sand and salt costs, road clearing?
Yes.
Did, does that money go into a bucket for emergencies?
That stays in the secondary roads fund. So a lot of that income is not all tax-based. He'll get some from the state, you know, like when we do some bridge swapping. It's not all county-funded. Road use tax, I guess that would be a different way of taxing it.
Are they gonna set that money aside or are they gonna spend it so that they can ask for a bigger budget next year? See, that's the things where if we save money, we need to put it aside for a rainy day instead of just burning it so that we can keep our budget improving and increasing tax revenue every single year.
I think our engineer is very good about, you know, saving that fund.
Did their, did their budget go up? Based on that, it should've went down. And, and-
That is, it's strange. I'm, I'm new to the whole, the, the county engineer's budget was very confusing. Okay? He'll have, it was very, very hard for me to follow. I'd asked a lot of, I've got a better understanding, but to tell you I know the ins and outs of it, absolutely not. They'll have a wage in one spot for, say, $6,000. And I thought, what, what are we, who are we paying $6,000? Well, in, in that instance, it's, it's set up that say that we have people working on a bridge project. And the money came from the state with the federal government, okay? We have to show spending authority on that. Let's say we've got six bridges and they're a million dollars apiece. This is just, I'm just throwing out numbers. So our budget has to show that we're planning on spending that $6 million. On the return, okay? If it's something through the feds or the states, they have a process. Well, then, we get that money back. But we have to show the spending authority upfront. Does that make sense?
You have to show that you're using those funds.
We have to, and it has to show up in the budget upfront, that we're gonna spend this money. Now, if they don't spend it, we don't get reimbursed. Okay? We didn't spend it on that project, then we don't get reimbursed. Or if the project comes in less, but then, let's say we have somebody working on that, then their portion of wages gets paid out of that specific line so it can then be reimbursed under that specific project. It is, what is his, it's like-
Seventeen-
Seventeen paid to, yeah.
Last year was 15 million, so, but I know he has a couple of big projects.
There's, there's big bridge projects and stuff in there. They have their own line items, I'll call them. I'm sure that's not the correct terminology. But they, they have their own number that they're paid from. And then, they have to track it back. We have to show the spending authority upfront.
He has state DOT codes, so he has to buy by the state budget.
So you have to spend the money. You have to spend the money.
Well, if we don't, we've still shown the spending authority 'cause we have to put that in upfront. But then, the money doesn't come back to the county on the backside. It's kinda like calling the shell game?
The sand and the salt, like he just said there a little bit ago. He, without actually looking at how many he's figuring in the dollar amount. If you don't spend it this fiscal year, it actually rolls over. He's got authority to spend it, but he didn't spend it, so his, say, last year you said it was 15 million. So he spent 14,500,000. So he, that 500,000 stays in the county here. It wasn't spent.
Unless it was grant money that we didn't ask to get reimbursed, that would stay with him.
Yeah, but that's like sand and salt is not.
Now, is anybody actively looking for areas to reduce costs? Like county roads is the example. I was once told that there were 700 miles of gravel roads in the county that nobody lives on, but we still plow the snow on them and maintain them. I don't know if that's a fact or not.
I don't know.
But there is a lot of miles of gravel road that nobody lives on. Why do we plow snow on it? Can that be reduced? You know, stuff like that. I'm sure there's a lot of places to save money.
And again, the schools would factor in on that too. If you got a school route around there, him being a bus driver, he could vouch for that.
Possibly, but maybe not.
The bus would have to drive four miles away instead of coming across that one block. So that would be hitting the school district up with-
Potentially, yeah.
extra wear and tear. You know, that I can't foresee, you know what I mean?
Yeah, but it could be-
I do, I do know, like you said, in my area, I know when it gets bad, I got three neighbors around her within three miles of me. They fall off to their driveway, they turn around, and that road's blocked.
They do, oh, really, I know. I haven't looked at that, but I was told that-
They open it up to their driveway 'cause it's the way the terrain and the ground is. And if it's being ground on that west side of that road, it gets six, eight, 10 foot deep of snow. And the only way to open that up is a snow blower. And since I've been a supervisor, the guy that lives there agrees with it. He always goes south, he does not go north, close the road.
And that was just one example. I'm sure there's other areas where, where to save. And two of them were brought up already, you know, with the courthouse security in here and this.
I'll touch a little bit on the courthouse security. I can't get into some of the things that we have dealt with, but I mean, when I first became a supervisor over six years ago, I was like you, I think it's nuts. We don't need it. In the last six years, there have had some issues that took place on the third floor. That, it was a good thing we had law enforcement in the building.
That's fine. During court, when court's in session, like other counties do, they bring in a deputy for that courtroom.
Okay. Now, we'd have to ask Derek how many days of the week to their court. You got court on second floor and you got court on third floor.
Yeah, so like, uh, we usually have three court service days. Oh, technically four. Um, so, uh, Tuesday is juvenile. And fam-, and like the family, like juvenile services on magistrate today would be non-indictables and traffic violations. And Thursday is district court service day for indictables, so that's the third floor. And then on Fridays is civil court day in district court.
So there's court in session every one of them days?
Except, except for Monday unless there's a trial.
Because other counties I've been to, I've talked to, they assign deputies for that if the case doesn't get plead up. But they say a lot of times, they'll plead to a lower charge, the court case won't happen, so they don't need anybody there.
I was on jury duty for a month and got called in zero times.
Right.
Every single time, there was supposed to be court, it got canceled.
I've, I've only been upstairs in the courthouse one time when there was court in session. Why do we have, and why do we need two deputies there? When court's in session, put somebody at the top of the stairs and do your thing up there.
And, and I think-
And this building here, why do we have security here? You can have a deputy out here during the supervisors meeting, a couple hours a week.
So the deputies on court service days are normally are the ones who check in. They check in with the deputy at the court. And they inform the court that so-and-so's here, um, to handle their matter. And, um, and then the person down below watch, you know, takes care of people coming in and, uh-
Oh, so you still have to have another deputy upstairs during court?
One of the two ends up there.
One of them goes up there.
I think that's just a total waste of money.
I just wanna ask a question about, uh, taxes and the school budget. Our taxes go to pay the school budget, right? High schools and everything? What, how is, how is the, uh, change in the voucher system to pay for private schools gonna change our tax rates?
I can't answer that.
Sounds like the legislation.
Yeah, I honestly can't answer that.
'Cause more money's gonna be going into vouchers for private schools. And so does that mean our taxes are gonna go up to pay for, uh, the regular high schools?
That, that's like something like within like, say, like the school boards and stuff deal with. 'Cause like, um, 'cause that's an issue that I don't think we handle.
Really, your school boards do not handle that kind of a thing that's decided at the legislative level?
Yeah, I think that too.
And-
We just gotta sit and take it.
What I would do is take it to, you know, I would call your legislators for sure.
Good luck with that.
And I, I mean, I've tried doing that too, and they don't like to respond. But I think when it comes to election time, some of this stuff needs to be thought out on whether or not these people are actually working for, you know, our public schools or not.
Of what they're doing.
And I've went and spoke with them. Some of them, it goes on deaf ear. Some of them actually sit down and actually care and wanna listen, but it just varies on the issues too, I guess.
You know, I have a comment for the board and for county residents. I think all of us come to these meetings expecting taxes to go up somewhere. Because when we turn on the TV or we read in the newspaper that the national inflation rate is somewhere between 2% and 3%, so I think a lot of people sitting here are gonna go, well, yeah, I'm probably gonna pay more this coming year. I think what has a lot of people upset is, when we pick up this paperwork, depending on what table you have, we're reading that the county taxes are going up with a 11.6% to 13.04%. I think the board, we, we hear your frustration that a lot of these are crammed down on the counties by the state. We get it. But I think you guys and your peer supervisors need to start to push back and get better accountability from the state. So the average citizen understands that there's a certain amount you guys can do on the budget. There's other things you can't do. Now, I don't see our state representatives or senators meeting with us about specific budget issues. You're the ones taking the heat to have to explain this. I think it'd be helpful to you guys, would you sit down with your peer supervisors across the state and start to put some leverage on Des Moines? Either if it's gonna be a mandate, you pay for it, or we have the option to, to bow out of this program. And the observation I would make to the audience is, we need to be careful what we ask our government to do. I'm thinking, one of the sore spots for me is there was a, I believe it was a county-wide bond issue for an ambulance service.
The, the emergency-
Okay? We already had ambulance service in the north part of the county. Now we have it added to our property taxes. Well, everybody likes an ambulance service, nobody likes to pay the bill. So as voters, we need to be careful what we ask for. And the other observation for you folks, it would be helpful if you had other county leaders in here. Like you commented about having the assessor here. Please, that would be helpful because they have a better handle on this than you guys do. Get him here. Everybody uses the roads. Have the engineer here. Let him explain some of these intricacies between the county dollar, the federal dollar, the state dollar. He's in a better position to explain that than you guys are. But it just, it's baffling when we hear on the news that inflation is 3% and we're seeing 11, 11 or 12 and 13%. That needs a better explanation from boards across the state and our legislators.
Well, and to, to his point, it's just like this number is derived from a number of times the boards met with individual departments to go through, like what Ron's saying, line by line and asking questions. And there's a reason why it's open. You know? Because I know there has been folks before asking questions too, from the audience, if I'm not mistaken. Um, and so, you know, they just, and those, those questions like that have been asked today, you know, in a sense, been asked before in previous, like going over the budget and stuff from department heads and whatnot, which in combined comes up with this number to what you're saying. You know, and it's just like, you did mention like the emergency fund. That was something that was voted on to be like essentially a tax levy to support, say, emergency services county-wide, correct? So there are stuff like that where other counties, maybe Boone, might not have put that on. So-
Well, there just seems to be, for me, I, I understand taxes are, it's paid flat forever, but we've had a huge hike last year in my, in my loan that I have to pay. And I'm on disability, I can't work any longer. I have a set amount that I have to stay within. But if our taxes keep going up, I will be out of my home. I won't be able to afford my mortgage anywhere. You know, I'll be in the street. So somebody has to be held accountable for the decisions that are being made with the board. Otherwise, who's, who's gonna work for us? You know, who's gonna be our representative when they go to Des Moines?
I, I think it would've been very helpful if the county assessor had been here knowing that we were gonna be going over this or the county engineer or wherever you're seeing these hikes, so they could explain why we're having this increase.
Or someone who knows how to use a calculator. Basic math would also be helpful.
It's unfortunate that it's out, doing that kind of be here today.
I don't know, I don't know if it'll help, but this is my copy of what happened where I live. 56.99% increase with a typo. Everybody was up in arms and the whole town was just ready to start fires everywhere. And it was a typo. It's not that at all, so I mean-
And you paid $12,000 for that.
Well, that's what that, that entity, the city, that put in the department of management. So I'm the one that pulled, I mean, we have to have a cutoff and they've realized that after the mailing went out.
Yeah, so that was, it sure had people up in arms, I know that.
So here's where my curiosity lands on this. Two years ago, all of our assessed values were greatly increased for everybody. We all ended up paying more property tax and everything else. The following year, our property taxes dropped. And then now this year, our property taxes are gonna go up again. Where did all that extra money go? I mean, the assessed value was greatly increased, so you had to bring in more tax revenue. Do we take on bigger projects that, I mean, I didn't see, or where'd the extra money go?
How, how much money each year does the county bring in more than the previous year? How many millions of dollars?
In our reserves per se?
Well, no, like last year, you took in X amount on property tax. This year, you took in X amount. How much difference is there? How many millions of dollars more?
So when you look at, like as our budget, we look at, which I've been explaining to the board, you look at our total revenue that we're estimating we're gonna generate. But then you look at our expenses, and it always looks greater, so there's a negative question.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm, I'm talking-
Yeah, so last year in our fiscal year '24, I wanna say we had probably 2 million that we didn't spend, that we put in for asking.
Okay, that, that's not the question I'm asking.
For say-
You, you collect X amount last year for property taxes. You collected X amount this year. What's the difference?
Oh, so you're comparing '23 to '22 without, I wouldn't know that.
Whatever year.
Yeah. I'd have to probably do some math, but I can get that for you.
I'm sure it's in the millions of dollars.
Yeah.
Where did them extra millions of dollars go?
So they stay in those funds for fund balance reserves. So they stay in those funds for fund balance reserves.
Stay in funds?
Stay in our county funds. So if it's, depending on if it's the county dollar.
We are working on that.
But we need to see proof. Otherwise, there'll be accountability.
I, I, I get it. You don't, you don't see what we're doing. So what you're asking for is in the end, we say, we're not going to send on the mail in.
Please don't.
Maybe do like a show your work, generate something?
Something online.
Something to show you what the county, this is what we're, this is what we're cutting, this is what we're moving.
Yeah, because all we see is people coming in asking for more and more and more. I didn't see anybody come in here and ask for less.
Why would you?
Well, and then we also have the outside entities that aren't, you know, county services that come in and ask for allocations as well too. K cap.
You couldn't do something online, right? Give out an intervention online.
I mean, this, today's meeting is just strictly on the levy. So we can't increase the levy from what we proposed. Our budget, actual budget hearing, we're going to be setting that next week. We have to have the budget approved and adopted by April 30th. So we will also be hosting a budget hearing as well for fiscal year 26. So again, that notice that I send in the papers will show the max. The supervisors can still reduce that at their hearing and do those cuts or adjustments. What we have to propose though is the worst case scenario.
So the, if we talk to the auditor or to the assessor and find out what the average increase in property values are.
You should be able to answer those questions.
And the taxable value, not just the appraised value, but taxable value. And then we figured out what that increase actually was, which this is not that number. Um, and then we decide what levy we can actually lower to match that, right? And so right now, I'm just hearing hypotheticals that we don't actually know what the increase in taxable value is. And so we're just picking a levy rate that's lower, but not lower by the same amount that we just increased to tax base.
I just know our taxable value has increased by 2.88% compared to last year. But, so like for example, the assessor, he's doing a, doing the 2025 assessments. We won't know those rollbacks until the following fall to tell you what those taxable dollars are. Because it's always, you know, we go from square one to square two. And again, there's so many unknowns to us, like currently, we don't even know how to, how we're going to proceed with our mental health. Because the state did away with our regions and come July 1st. I don't even know how we're going to provide those services, how we're funding it, because I have, we haven't been told. All 99 counties are just like out there.
It's limbo waiting for legislation to give direction. I know.
Even though I have a deadline, we have to wait on them. But, yeah. It can be very frustrating.
That's the frustrating part, so.
There just seems to be no accountability from any level.
Exactly.
You know, which is a problem. That's why we vote for people. And we expect them, when we vote for them, to do their bidding for us. And it seems to me that none of that is working the way it should be. We, we have representatives that should be going into Des Moines to, um, you know, fight, fight for our needs, you know?
I can honestly say I knew though, we had a legislation reception two weeks ago and I was there voicing my opinions on numerous things. But again, I'm one person, so, you know, we think we're elected at the local level, but does that really? You know, we go as a group and voice our opinions. But as we've all experienced, it doesn't change things or sometimes you just can't control some of those other things that happen. I'm, I'm here in the middle man all the time because I'm putting all these together into the budget. And I, you know, take, take it from all ends, but I can't help every aspect of, or answer every question. Like you said, we should have had our assessor here, you know, maybe in hindsight, next year, we can plan to have all those available and maybe make it in an evening meeting for those that really want to attend, you know, make it more accountable.
I mean, I just don't understand that. Nothing new here in Benton. It's not like we had a huge, you know, people increase of people moving here. One of the things that was nice when I bought my house here was the fact that the taxes were lower because we were in Benton, you know, versus Cedar Rapids. And, um, you know, to me, it just seems like there's no accountability by anyone to try and help us. Like I said, I'm going to be out of house if it goes up.
And I agree with you saying it's all, at all levels, you know? We can control the county, we need the city and the school, everybody to hear everybody's concerns.
If my property goes up by, my assessed value goes up by 20%, my taxes, real estate taxes go up, right?
It would definitely go increased, you know, again, I won't know the rollback, but.
Why, why would that happen? Because, just because my property value went up, did the expenses for the county go up? I mean, it seems, it seems to me that you're, you're assessing more taxes on people when you really have no right to, right? Just because the property value went up, where, where's the extra expense? Well, I understand, I hear what everybody's saying. I am for cutting county spending, like no mistake. But what I'm hearing you say is your house is worth a hundred thousand and now they say it's worth a hundred and twenty thousand. Okay, you're taxed because it's just like paying for groceries. The more you buy, the more it's worth, the more you pay. But that doesn't mean the expenses of the county is going up. That just means. Our expenses go up, the same yours do.
So who, who decides?
My taxes doubled.
Your expenses go up and you collect more taxes while we're all making less.
My, my expenses at home?
Exactly. All of us are.
Yep, and that's why I say, I hear what everybody's saying and I believe we need to make some cuts. Now, am I going to tell you we're going to cut five percent off your property taxes? I don't think that's realistic, but we're.
You're taxing people for unrealized gains on properties though.
Yeah.
And just because my value of my property doesn't go up, doesn't mean that I necessarily have more money. So when you increase the taxes, all it is, is just increasing the expense that is to live, the expense that is to do business. It, it's like, it's like taxing, and, and we've seen legislation come out where they, people talked about this, taxing unrealized gains on your stock market. When you, you, you haven't even cashed out on the stock, but they're going to tax you for the gain. To me, don't we pay sales taxes and all these other things to cover some of these things when we sell a home? I mean, obviously some of that rolls over, but to me, it just, it just seems to me like, where's the breaking point where people can't afford to pay the property taxes? When you're putting people out of their homes or when you're putting people, when you, you know, just like you said, Ron, I mean, we, I run my business just like the county has to run. I have to compete for employees, just like the county has to compete for employees. I have the same issues, you know, but when, when, when this, when this, when the county or the city or the assessor, whoever may be, arbitrarily raises the taxes to a level that's really, you can't even make sense of, it, it draws a, a great deal of question as to where the money's going. Why is that being done and, and, you know, why can't we have it, why, you know? I would think if you're going to do that, people would, would deserve at least an answer like this is how it works. You know, if I raise my business costs and I pass that on to my customer, I can promise you that the customer asks why they're paying more. And most people, I think all of us in the room understand that it costs more to live. We, we get that. But, you know, the property taxes, just because my house goes up, just because the assessor says it's worth a hundred thousand dollars more, fifty thousand dollars more, it, that doesn't necessarily mean that I'm going to sell it for that. Somebody has to be willing to pay that for it. So it's just like arbitrarily raising our living expenses. And when you squeeze people's living expenses to the point where they, they, they can't get better jobs or they can't get paid more per hour or they can't, you know, they, 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 they move. They go to find some other place where they can. So I don't know, I just think that, I just think that it, some of the stuff that's went on here in the last year or two is, 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 um, not good for the community. And he already says that, so.
As for you, Jerry, you were asking a little bit before. I, I don't remember the number for sure, but I think in 20, 2021, after the racial hit, the total tax dollars that were raised went down because of the racial. We lost a lot of buildings, you know, all that came off the tax roll. Well, then it took a couple of years for that, new buildings and everything to be rebuilt where it got back up there again. I can't tell you the exact dollar amount, but I do know in 21 and 22, the whole revenue for county went down. Because I was thinking, I believe, when we had an assessor meeting in 22, there was over 4,000 grain bins built, just grain bins in Benton County.
I was, I was fortunate. I, my taxes didn't go down that year because I didn't lose anything. So, but, uh, I understand that.
Those are egg structures.
Things don't get paid tax on.
Not near as what you're paying on commercial.
I agree, I agree.
But things.
That's some of the problem. No offense to any farmers. It's an egg-based state, I get it, but got the same problem. When you go across the street from where I'm at with my business and the taxes over there are 20% of what I'm paying on this, on the east side of the street, just because it's farmland. The farmland's generating revenue for people. And again, I'm, my family was, had, my grandpa was a farmer, so I'm not, I would never crap on farmers. Please don't take it that way. But it just seems to me like that's a little out of whack too. When, when you turn to the commercial businesses constantly that are not egg-based in this state to generate the property taxes or the revenue, um, eventually if you, if you're not a farmer or you're not egg-based, you just go to some state where that doesn't happen, you know? So to me, it's all those, all these things you seem to me like they, they become a little bit of, well, out of whack. But I have no solution and I'm not an elected official, don't want to be, put that on record.
Something that I've heard from a lot of people, uh, listening here. Uh, you'd like a final result, basically, something in the paper, something somewhere of, here's what we've done to help with your taxes. Is that, is that kind of what I'm hearing?
That's so mysterious. Everything's mysterious. You don't really know what is going on.
Can we try to help the folks out and? But don't spend $12,000. Now, now, here's, here's.
That, I can't.
We'll, we'll try to, do we try to get in a couple of different places, Tracy?
Other ways of telling.
On the website.
On the web, yes.
They do like a worksheet per se, um, just explain to them why you're doing the cuts dollar wise. I mean, they're not going to like care as much as we do on what fund is doing what, but as an overall.
Just the, just a dollar wise.
Yeah.
Uh, because I know like Jody, do you get the live wire up there anymore?
Uh, no.
Because they, they cut down the delivery and that. Uh, but we'll try to get it out somewhere where, because I know Jody lives in the northern part of the county. Al, you get the live wire and stuff anymore? Al, where it's over towards Dizer. So we'll try to get it out where folks can.
Or put it on, you know, on their website with our.
The county website would be our easiest.
And social media.
That would be free for us.
Yeah. Something from the county assessor too on how he's determining the taxes.
That's, that's magic to me. I don't know.
Yeah, but I mean, if he could put something on the county website.
And I'm guessing it's magic to pretty much everybody sitting here in the room. I was just, I, I, I get it.
But I agree, he could, he could definitely explain those, any of those parts.
It's like a, you know, how he's coming up with.
Like I know what I'm forced to do for budget wise, he should understand and be able to explain his for the assessment.
Yeah, that would be nice.
I'm sure, I'm sure he does. I'm sure he understands it.
Oh, I'm sure he does. I'm just, yeah, the same. We don't.
I'm, I'm in the same boat. You folks are. When I got mine, I've, I've talked to Haley about these forums several times. I pick up a little more each time, uh, and I know she's got to be frustrated talking to me about it. But she says, it's everybody. Nobody understands this forum.
Whenever budgets are certified, when will we see that? This September, next September?
Oh, no.
It, so when we approve our budget by April 30th, then all the entities, schools, cities, everybody submits their final budget to the state department of management. And then they put together the consolidated tax rate, which they'll then certify back to me at the local level. And then I apply it to your taxes. So your statement that goes out in July is when this will be what?
Oh, this year?
July or August. So your first payment will be September 30th.
Okay, and we'll see that reflected this September.
Correct. Yeah, and it's still based on the 24th. So what Larry is sending out, assessor right now, the 25th, which will be based on next year's.
Next year's. That always runs a year behind.
So basically what's stated here is what we're likely to look at.
Because you're looking at the one that we had to mail out for the last year. Correct.
So, I mean, all of us being here discussing all this really isn't changing anything.
Sure, we're hearing your point of view.
Feel good.
We're going to take some action so you know what we've got.
It's essentially just showing the high, like the highest amount that they're projecting.
Worst scenario.
Yes, worst scenario. And this is open to the public to discuss things for them to consider when making the final budget recommendations or certifying, excuse me, correct?
That, that original piece that is published that says here's the county budget, that is absolute worst case. Okay? The, call it like the shopping list. We can have everything we want. Here it is. Okay? And I don't think we have any department heads or anybody that's doing that. But if there's anything they're asking for, now maybe we have to say, hey, we're going to have to make that decently for the last another couple of years. So that, that would then come out. Like this is the budget that we're going over. And we go through every page, every line on every page. We write notes, we highlight, this is what we do. Takes time.
Is that on the, on, we can see it?
I can run these reports. So what we do, every December, I send out those sheets to the departments and I kind of give them a three-year scenario. So they can look at what they asked for in 22, 23, what the year-to-date was, et cetera. And then they in return give me what they're asking for 26. But then they're also giving me a reestimated amount where they're predicting if they're coming in less or over current year. Then I provide that to the board and then they fine tune it. But that is public.
But it's not online or accessing easily?
No, but I probably could run that. I mean, it's public document.
I'll come up and get it from you.
Well, like if you're having increases, you know, as, as in a, say a spreadsheet, wouldn't you be able to say like, okay, health insurance was 10,000 this year, next year it's going to be 15. Uh, we have checked with another company, maybe we come in at 13. I mean, would, couldn't we have it to where it's showing that information, whether it's healthcare, insurances for vehicles, uh, expenses in road divisions? Um, you should be able to have the cost and then what, what the budget is maybe expected to be. But couldn't you come in actually to where say it's, you know, we've reduced whatever cost?
So as a state budget, the, the publication notice that I have to provide to the public is just the front page. And I get what you're saying. So if you actually look at our county budget, it's like 15 pages. So we show our revenues, then we, we have it broken down by service areas. Like service area one would be our safety, um, a lot of that with our E911 towers, our sheriff department. Then we have service area three. So it's broken out into like nine different service areas. And within that, it has every fund and then it has a description over here and it shows the prorated. And then at the end, it'll show.
Means that, so that's how we've came up with there's going to be a three percent increase because of every individual bracket, I guess, or line item? They, they, they go as far as saying, okay, we believe that projected fuel cost is going to cost us this much next year along the road grader. And there is a specific place, this is where we pay for the fuel for the road grader. The sheriff has one. This is a specific line where we pay for fuel for patrol cars. I understand there's things like we can't control like fuel costs, like insurance costs. Everybody's insurance, I mean, I'm checking on different insurance because everybody's insurance went up. So do, do we have someone that checks on the county's insurance on different things and puts it out for bid from other places?
We do. We do. I'll touch on the health insurance, the eyeglasses and the dental. We have different companies come in, sit right here in front of us, present what they can do for the county. Now, we are also a member of, what's it called, the other counties around here?
The ISAC pool, uh, state association of counties.
With other counties, we get a cheaper rate. We can get for the county employees, Blue Cross and Blue Shield, cheaper. We can get, for the county employees, Blue Cross and Blue Shield, cheaper, Blue Cross and Blue Shield with this pool than me as an individual trying to get Blue Cross and Blue Shield, whether it's through Farm Bureau or Blue Cross, Blue Shield Direct. So this is one way we see money, but that.
Can we get in on that?
Well, the county's also, we're also partially self-funded, so we help hide down those deductibles, so, and that's.
These new mandates, the, that little pamphlet you got there, where can I find that information on?
I can provide you that, that's just something our affiliate took to the legislators a couple of weeks ago.
You can have mine.
I'm the treasurer of our auditors association statewide, so, yeah.
Did the state pass some legislation, I, I thought I read, like, not long ago, where they actually limited the property tax, tax increases?
That's why I was forced to redo. So, like, our general fund, the maximum per accounting is 3.5, and it's been at that levy rate since the eighties. There was 30 counties that went above that 3.5. So when the legislation come in, they're trying to force those counties to reduce that, to get back to that level. But I didn't even know counties could go above that. They had to, you know, some of them were using it for their everyday expenses, they just couldn't make the 3.5 work. So that's.
I understand if there's any controlling that, like, really, like, limits Larry to coming to my house and saying that the ground moldings too nice and.
So that, I don't know, it's limiting us on our levies, but I don't know on the assessment how they're gonna reflect that. Other than they're, they're gonna do away with the rollbacks, is what they're proposing. And then increasing the homestead exemptions to $25,000 for every person. And right now, it's 4,850 on 65 and younger. But that's, again, that's just what we're seeing, you know, that they're proposing. Because their goal is to go till fiscal year 29 and limit us to 2%. But they have, you know, kind of a timeline that they're.
Did you kinda catch what she just said there? I said nectar would be worse.
Yeah, yeah. It's gonna be, it's, I keep warning, it's gonna get scarier and scarier, so.
Right now, it's 4,900, 4,800?
Forty, 4,850, if you're 65 and younger. If you're 65 and older, it's like 84, or 65, 6,400, I think it was. So that money that we're not collecting, years past, we used to submit that to the state, and the state would give the county that money back. But they have not done that for the last few years, so.
But see, like, if you're taking, you get a lot of corners on that, like at 65 and older?
Yeah, I mean, it's supposed to help you.
But you have to pay more.
And then they increase the, if you're in the military, they increase that as well. Um, farmers get family farm credit, some ag land credit, just different exemptions again, that you can apply for with the assessor's office.
But he just raises something else. I mean, you can't, that milage, who, who knows what he's doing, how, how he's playing with his numbers? You know, if you get him to knock off something in one area, they raise it in another one.
But then he, he might get forced with the state to equalize it the following year, you know, so, I know. It's rob Peter to pay Paul, I get that.
It's a trickle effect.
Yeah.
The way, like, we have to submit stuff to them, they give us a number back. And it's with many departments, especially like with assessments, you know, with the state revenue department. And of course, like what Haley has been saying, like with the Iowa management department, too, you know? These are just numbers you receive from them, correct? Yeah.
Any more questions?
I'm sure there's a lot more people that couldn't be here that would love to have made their voices heard.
Well, next year, I'm kinda, I kinda like that idea.
Because I had another.
Have it at night.
Better get a bigger room.
Well, we, we've done that before, had it like in our court, courtroom upstairs, or, um, but I agree, and I've had another concerned citizen email me and would like, you know, because 9:00 AM is not good enough for those that have a job and wanna work, but they wanna be heard as well. So we appreciate that, and I will take that definitely into consideration for next year when I schedule this. And I will also try to do, I won't publish that whole 15-page budget, but I will publish that PDF on our county website, so you guys can really truly see that breakdown per line item, where those dollars go.
How much of this was mandated, this mail-out?
That, that mailing cost, I haven't got the final bill, but last year, it was roughly just under $12,000.
100% mandated.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can we put it on a, a card and save?
Again, that's generated, yeah, so the department, so all those entities have to go out on the state. And they're, they have, they're required to put their dates and all that in, and then I just pull in the file into my software.
I need to know who to contact about this, because this is worthless.
Yeah.
So I mean, it's, it's not clear, but I think it's wrong, frankly. I think the numbers on it are incorrect. And so whoever's mandating that, I wanna know so I can call them and have them fix it before they do it again.
Is that the state auditor who handles that?
Nope, it is not, that is like our Department of Management and our legislations. Yeah, because I was just in Des Moines, all of us were sitting there, listening to the Department of Management telling us what a nightmare this is to figure out. But knowing we were gonna sit here and try to answer your questions by not understanding their mailing, so.
It's wrong. It's trying to maintain compliance with what has been passed by legislation.
Yes, yes.
And keep in mind, forewarned on, we all knew that that was gonna cause troubles.
Yeah.
Because nobody understands it, it's, to me, it's poorly written.
Incorrect.
And our auditor.
It's very hard to understand.
We're trying to sit down with them and, and make, if they, if they're gonna enforce that again, we've started a subcommittee to try to meet with them, you know, as those auditors, because I know how to calculate your taxes based on the normal way. So we're gonna not say dumb it down, but make it more understandable to everybody.
I mean, we don't even know, just, just looking at, you know, both sides of the sheets, whether those numbers are actually real numbers that they're using.
And they're not using your individual, they're just taking that lump sum of the 100, $100,000 example from last year versus 110 assessed value this year.
None of them figures are yours.
Yeah.
None of them.
It's as a blanket as a whole.
It's like a projection.
Yes, that's why I've had a gentleman come in, and he was ready to write a check for his taxes. I'm like, this is not your tax sheet.
Why me and you?
And it's.
Wish it was.
Yeah, yeah. And it, please feel free to email me, I mean, I'm, we're transparent, I can provide you any of these reports that we've sat here and looked at. It's all public information, so. I'll do my best.
Transparency.
Yeah.
Well, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
One second.
On paper.
Chip it aye.
Demon aye.
Bulls aye.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you.
Hopefully, you answered some questions.